Good evening, I would like to call the June 1st, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please be advised that this meeting is being hosted through livestream on the city's website and by teleconference for public comment. Due to the structure of this meeting, I would like to remind the Planning Commission to have their microphones turned on and positioned so the audience can hear. Director King, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Lemke?
Here.
Commissioner Beamsterfer?
Here.
Vice Chair Van Arsdale?
Here.
And Chair Worth?
Here.
Commissioner Lemke, would you lead us in the invocation of flag salute?
We're gonna do the invocation first, actually. God of wisdom, we seek your help today. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us, the Lord, as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda. Reveal problem areas and show us best solutions that will apply. Point our eyes to every positive outcome since our last meeting and let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, help us apply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters and make plans. This we pray in your name, amen. Please face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with love, peace, and justice for all.
Alright, Director King, I understand we have a new introduction of someone new to the city?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to our new senior planner. We've been waiting for this position to be filled for a long time. And who I'd like to introduce is Mina Morgan. He has multiple jurisdiction experience as well as multiple years. And his last assignment was with the county of Riverside. So he's coming over to Hemet with us. So, Mina, if you'd like to come up and say a few words?
My name is Mina Morgan. My name is Mina Morgan, just very excited to be here and I'm looking forward to working with y'all.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you very, very much.
Oh, you're really busy.
Yeah. Welcome to the city of Hemet.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Alright, agenda item number four, approval of minutes. Are there any comments or changes? Entertainer motion?
I'd like to move approval of the May 18th Planning Commission minutes.
I'll second.
Motion carries four to, uh, four zero one. Four zero one, sorry, one upstain. Alright, um, agenda item number five, public comment period. To accommodate public comment, we've made some temporary changes to this part of our agenda that were necessitated to comply with COVID-19 directives. There is a temporary two-minute-per-person time limit for all general public comments on non-public hearing items. All who wish to speak, including commissioners and staff, need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members of the public shall comply with the adopted rules of decorum, Resolution 4545, a copy of which can be requested through the city clerk's office. You may fill out a form and submit your comments online at www.hemetca.gov/councilchamberlive. Submittals must be done before 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. For those that wish to join by teleconference, you may join by calling 888-585-9008 and when prompted dial 743-463-604-POUND. You'll be asked for your name prior to speaking. Reminder, if you are joining by teleconference, please meet your phone to prevent noise interference until you are given time to provide public comment. Also, when speaking, please make sure to mute your livestream. Please state your name and item you are commenting on before speaking. Are there any members of the public participating through teleconference that would like to commit on any items, I'm sorry, comment on any items not on the agenda? Do we have any e-commerce submitted?
We do not have any e-commerce.
Any members of the public? Alright, well, we'll move on then to item 6A, Development Agreement Amendment 20-001 for the Second Amendment to Development Agreement Number 04-02 for Tres Serritos West Residential Project. Are we just, we're just gonna move this to, I'm sorry?
If you'd like, okay. So, this item just, staff requesting it continues to June 15th meeting to meet the noticing requirements. There was a little bit of an issue with mailing out labels. So, we've received them, we have it all ready to be sent out. So, we can bring it back to the 15th for this item.
Alright, so move to continue this item to the June 15th, 2021 Planning Commission Hearing to allow additional time for public mail-out notice. Is a second involved? I did move that.
He moved that.
He seconded, I'm sorry. And that carries 5-0. Item 6B is for the conditional use permit 21-004 and the site development review 21-008 for Dunkin' Donuts.
Good evening, Chairman Worth, members of the Planning Commission and community. My name is Monique Alanis Flader, the project planner for conditional use permit 20-004 and site development review 21-008. The applicant is Howard Rosenfall on behalf of Wentworth Plaza LLC, the property owner. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of South Sanderson Avenue and Wentworth Drive. The project involves construction of a new 1,875-square-foot Dunkin' Donuts drive-through with indoor dining area on approximately 1.02 acres. Dunkin' is a seller of coffee beverages, donuts, and pastries and breakfast sandwiches. Proposed operating hours will be from 4:30 AM to 11:00 PM. Dunkin' Donuts site is an existing vacant pad site within the Wentworth Plaza. The site is relatively built out and this is the remaining pad site. Access to the site is provided from South Sanderson Avenue and Wentworth Drive, both from a 30-foot-wide access driveway entrance. The property maintains a general plan land use designation of business park and is zoned CM, commercial manufacturing. Site improvements include a 12-foot-wide drive-through with menu board. Access to the drive-through entrance will be served primarily from Wentworth Avenue, Wentworth Drive. There will also be outdoor seating, ADA accessible, and parking will be provided to the pathway onto Sanderson, South Sanderson Avenue Parkway. There is an existing trash enclosure within the commercial center. New landscaping is proposed around the building and reserved loading area for pickup deliveries. A total of 10 parking spaces is required and a total of 10 parking spaces, including two ADA parking stalls, have been provided. Additional parking is available within the commercial center as needed. The new drive-through queuing lane entrance is located at the northwest corner of the project site. A one-way, 12-foot-wide drive aisle. The drive-through lane would wrap around the building in a counterclockwise direction and provide stacking of seven cars before the menu board. Our code, Section 90-14 requires a minimum queuing of no less than six vehicles up to the menu board. As illustrated in the site plan, the minimum queuing of six vehicles has been provided. And in addition, the stacking of four cars, additional stacking of four cars up to the pickup window has also been provided, which provides additional queuing capacity and improves the service rate during peak drive-through conditions. Landscaping is proposed throughout the site and around the building and is existing in the parking areas within the stopping center now. The existing landscaping within the parkway on Wentworth Drive and South Sanderson, the South Sanderson Avenue follows the scenic highway setback landscape criteria and that is existing. Existing pad site within the remaining parcel is proposing landscaping within and around the building. No additional landscaping is required above and beyond what is being proposed and with this build-out, they will be in compliance. A condition of approval recommends, in order to avoid light spillage onto South Sanderson and Wentworth Drive intersection, a condition of approval recommends a 42-inch decorative screen wall along the frontage where the drive-through lane wraps around the building in a counterclockwise direction up to the pickup window as depicted in this graphic illustration. That can be found in Condition Number 15. Proposed modern architectural style of the building, also referred to as the Dunkin' Donuts next-gen concept, includes exterior materials, Saco, Enshering Williams, Iron Ore, Passive Gray, and Nebulous White. Materials include fiber cement lap-siding elements in wood-tone honeyglaze. Corporate brand accent and trim colors are proposed for Dunkin' Donuts Orange and Dunkin' Peak where there's, where accents are proposed. The standalone, modern-style coffee shop would add a unique centerpiece to the intersection of South Sanderson and Wentworth Drive, would complement the industrial zone development surrounding the site within the vicinity and the nearby airport. It colors the materials from the left to the right. Includes flooring, countertops, although the scope of this review is exterior materials and finishes, which can be found on the very right column. The applicant has provided a detailed color palette. The proposed interior layout of the indoor seating area, customer service, and one accessible bathroom have been provided. Also, a designated kitchen area and cooler area, a utility room, and drive-through pickup window area. On May 21st, 2021, the city gave public notice by advertising in the press enterprise and by mailing to property owners and tenants within 500 feet prior to the holding of this public hearing, at which the project would be considered by the Planning Commission. No comments have been received from the public. The project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA Guidelines, Section 15303, Class 3, for new construction. In conclusion, it is recommended that the Planning Commission's adopt Planning Commission Resolution approving conditional use permit 21-004 and site development review 21-008, subject to the findings and conditions of approval outlined in the staff report and to direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
I do have a question in the parking lot reference. I mean, I eat there two establishments all the time and the parking is, has a lot of cars in the parking lot, especially during lunch and early lunch, sometimes right after. I know like tacos and beer, they have their outdoor area, which takes up a lot of parking spaces that are considered in that small parking spot. And I know Lemongrass does as well, they have an outdoor area. And I know with Dunkin' Donuts, there's gonna be some parking lot being renewed for the drive-through to put in there. Is this gonna be enough adequate parking spaces for all these restaurants with tacos and beer having that outdoor dining?
The shopping center was designed in accordance with the city's codes for retail as well as, in this case, we're evaluating the parking requirements for a restaurant. As a standalone, they have provided the minimum that they are required. The parking spacing, the parking spaces surrounding the site around the Dunkin' Donuts is adequate to support the Dunkin' Donuts site. However, I cannot speak to the condition currently within the shopping center. I do know that there are the outdoor patio areas that have taken up some of the parking spaces due to the outdoor seating temporary use permit allowances for COVID-19. That is a temporary condition. It is our hope that we will be able to regain those parking spots that have been lost within this center in the near term.
Also, did you, did you show an aerial photo where that area is all dirt? Like right there, see? So, are those parking spaces for that parcel that are already in? Or are there additional parking spaces going to be put in with?
Those parking spaces will be utilized for the Dunkin' Donuts sites surrounding this pad.
And they're required, they're required, they're over their requirement, right?
They meet the minimum. They are providing 10 parking spaces, two of which are ADA accessible.
Questions? Do we have any idea what the criteria is or the timing? Maybe the, backwards, maybe the timing or the criteria for the temporary outdoor seating for COVID? Is that tied to any particular color coding for the county or for the state? When we, we'll go back and say, hey, this, now that you're, we're at a certain point, you need to get rid of those areas?
Let me try to answer that for you, sure. So, originally when we had adopted this section for COVID-19 due to the indoor dining could not be accomplished, we made some adjustments for those restaurants so that we can be accommodating for those restaurants in the city. And again, that is just as a temporary measure to offset the loss of business that restaurants were, was occurring. So, after the, or whenever the county health allows us to go back to a full capacity, then those outdoor seating areas, which are approved under the temporary use, will all go back to normal parking spaces.
So, it's based on the full capacity of the restaurant itself? So, and that, I think that's, that's at the very, very, oh, spectrum. So, that, it's likely that might be a little while before we get to actually full capacity.
Right, and we don't know what the scheduling is at this point, but that is our, I guess, our agreement with the business owners and that once we go back to full capacity, those parking lots will be gained back.
Yeah, and that, that was a great workaround to allow the businesses to, to, to stay active. But as we, this is the transition stage back. So, it'll be interesting how that, how that, how we go back once we get to a full capacity to work with those business owners to go back in and remove all of those temporary structures that are taking up parking places. The only question I have is in regards to the natural highway, the scenic setback. There's nothing of this project that impacts? Because the existing, it looks like the existing right-of-way is all landscaped. So, the landscaping as part of this project is, is outside of any limits. So, there's nothing that it could potentially impact the Sanderson Avenue requirements?
As part of this project, generally speaking, the existing right-of-way landscaping would be maintained in place and that's what has been proposed by the applicant. However, in observation of the site, a condition of approval is recommending, although there is, there is an existing scenic highway setback landscape area designed already and existing right-of-way landscaping on Wentworth. However, in review of the site, it is recommended in Condition Number 14 that some of the existing landscaping has died and is in disrepair and in need of replanting and refreshment to new drought-tolerant planting. So, this is a recommendation as part of this approval due to the, due to the proximity and location of this site, this pad site, as well as to evaluate the existing irrigation system that's in place now to see if there could perhaps be drip irrigation or a conversion of the existing system.
What is the extent of that potential requirement for the Dunkin' Donuts site? Is it just what's directly adjacent to their, their site? Or does it extend beyond the shopping, or throughout the shopping center?
Primarily the intersection or the frontage of where Dunkin' Donuts would, would be located at the intersection is where we recommend. The frontage of Dunkin' Donuts on South Sanderson as well as within the frontage of Wentworth Drive of Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, that'll, that'll, that'll clean it up nicely and make it look, look good. I'm assuming that the applicant hasn't had any issue with that, but we can hear from them.
The draft conditions of approval were forwarded to the applicant for their review. They have not, I have not received correspondence with regards to this particular condition.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do we have a representative from the applicant here or online?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me on the phone?
Yes.
This is Howard Rosenfall.
Please give your address for the record.
Yes, sir, 1600 East Florida Avenue, Suite 110, Hemet, California.
Great, thank you. Anything that you want to address the commission specifically on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, and I hope you can hear me better than my old ears can hear on my end. We, the Taco and Beer has submitted for an expansion. They're taking that next 1,200 feet that was manpower. The plans are done. That patio is coming down real quick. The city has, and code has been certainly diligent and Lemongrass is in the same boat. The good news is, is they've achieved incredible volumes during COVID and that's been a benefit to themselves, the landlord, and the city for revenue. We appreciate that the city had this emergency ordinance. But Taco and, they will both be down this year. And as far as the landscaping, we have known that we needed to replant. Sorry?
Nothing, go ahead.
The landscaping is gonna be completely redone to conform to the city's work on the solar farm as well as the new last year's performance marine. And we accept the condition. It's absolutely appropriate. Needs to be done for all of us. As will also be resealing and striping and crap filling the lot as part of getting Dunkin' Donuts open for year-end. Thank you.
Oh, great, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Just thank you for bringing them here. I'm glad we're gonna have a Dunkin' Donuts because I was getting jealous of Sanderson. So, when I heard they were having one and I wasn't sure we were, I'm very happy to see this come in.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Alright, Mr. Rosenfall, thank you so much. Much appreciated. Any other comments?
Thank you, sir.
Or input from the public? Now we'll close public hearing. Discussion, questions? Good to go?
I'd like to move that the Planning Commission adopt Planning Commission Resolution approving conditional use permit CUP 21-004 and the site development review SDR 21-008, subject to the findings and conditions of approval and direct staff to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk.
I'll second.
The motion is carried 5-0. Welcome to Hemet. And you'll get your Dunkin' Donuts now.
My mom will.
Okay. Alright, very good. We'll move forward to item 6C, zoning ordinance amendment 21-001 for residential setback and housing businesses. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair. Tonight, we're going to have Gabby present this item. She's our planning tech and this is her first presentation to the commission, so.
Awesome, no pressure.
You're gonna be great. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So, I'd like to present the ZOA 21-001 for the residential setback and housing businesses. The applicant is the City of Hemet. Property owner is very, and it's a citywide. It will be affecting the zoning, our single-family residential zoning sections designated by the size of the lots. The 7.2, 6,000, and the 5,000 square foot lots. And also the housing businesses will affect the commercial manufacturing. So, this is a city-initiated proposal to amend various sections of our Chapter 90 zoning code of the Hemet Municipal Code regarding residential setbacks and the modifications of housing-type businesses in the commercial zones. The reason we decided or researched the need to make an adjustment in our setbacks is because some of these newer developments are developing smaller-sized lots and we noticed that several residents were trying to place pad patio covers to the rear of their, and they wouldn't have the allowance of our original requirement, which is 10 feet. So, we did a little research and the surrounding cities all had a 5-foot setback or a non, or unenclosed patio cover. So, we decided to kind of help out our residents and make that change. This is what, or how the code will reflect once we've changed it. So, as you notice, we've included an attached nonenclosed patio and detached nonenclosed. So, all of those in the 7.2, the 6, and the 5 square foot lots will be changed to 5 feet from 10. So, then it was determined to assist in our housing development and meet the state and city needs and to help encourage housing development within the city. We are required to meet RENA numbers. So, we decided to make some changes, minor changes, to help encourage that. So, in our Hemet Municipal Code... So in our Hemet Municipal Code, Section 90-33, E10 and H4, we're requesting to change from a conditionally used, conditional, conditionally permitted use to a permitted use. And that's how our code will reflect once the change is approved. So the California Environment Quality Act under Section 15061, B3 of the CECL guidelines, which provides that CECL only applies to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and ZOA 21-001 will not have a physical project or physical change. We advertised in our press enterprise with a 10-day hearing notice. We did not receive any communications either in favor or in opposition of the project. So our recommendation is that the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution finding that the project is classified for CECL, I recommend that the city council approve ordinance adopting zoning ordinance amendment 21-001 based on the findings outlined there. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Gabby. All right. Any questions?
I just, I think I can't wrap my brain around it because you were saying, if I understand correctly, we are, we're making it smaller. So, but the issue before was that people were trying to put in the covers and they didn't have enough room. So is it just that we're eliminating the option altogether?
No. What happens is that some of the house placements on those smaller lots are so far back that when homeowners would come in and request a patio cover, they couldn't meet the setback because they only had 10 feet. So it was hard to do.
Oh, my gosh.
So we're making the setback smaller so they have more room.
I get it. That makes sense. Thank you.
I saw the light go off.
I know, I was like, I don't get it. Thank you.
My question was, and I saw where it was in red, that they were unenclosed structures. And, and I guess some people often take a patio cover and enclose it into a room. So I just imagine that's just code enforcement paying attention. This backyard just did a quick patio enclosure because that happens often.
Yeah, that is specifically why we put non-enclosed because we, at future residents won't try to enclose them.
Anything else?
On property line, Greg.
On property line.
Off in the fence line.
Very good. Well, I guess my, my only thought is, I see we have a, we go from 7,200 square foot lot, we're changing that to a five-foot separation, but then at 10,000 square foot, we're still at a 10 or 20-foot separation requirement. I'm wondering if, if we shouldn't maybe transition a little more because 10,000 is not a whole lot larger of a lot and we still have some of the same, same issues where, you know, when you start looking at 20-foot setback requirements on a smaller lot like that, it takes up a lot of the property. Is there, maybe, is there, did we look at the larger lots as well? Or not larger, but the 10,000 square foot lots and see what other cities were doing with those or did we just kind of keep it at the 7,200 and less?
We just kind of took what, you know, the people that were coming in to request the patio covers that were having an issue having them built or approved. We didn't find that we had a lot of that case in the 10,000, just in the smaller lots. So we decided just to focus on that, currently. That's not to say that it won't change later, but.
I guess my, my only thought would be maybe take a look at what the other cities are doing for the 10,000 square foot lot as well because they were all consistently much smaller setback on all the smaller lots. I'd be kind of interested to see what they are on the 10,000 square foot lot. So if we do have someone that comes in that requires that we don't have to go through the zoning amendment again. So if we're making the correction or the conformance to more of a standard for the smaller stuff, maybe it applies to the 10,000 lot as, as well, you know.
Sure, Commissioner. We can apply the five-foot setback for the patio cover, including the 10,000 and below on the lot, square footage.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can we do that now?
You can make the adjustments now, correct.
Because I can't, I kind of agree. I'm on a quarter acre lot myself. I want to do that because I should, but, but I, I see what you mean. It's only 3,800 square feet more for 10,000. Now the 20,000 is double that size, so I would say keep it that way for that. Do you see what that is?
Yeah, kind of depends where the house is placed too. Right, right.
It does, but it could, it could make a, because on those 10,000 square foot lots, a lot of times if they're rectangular or square, they'll set them on one side or the other because of the RV access that they want to attain.
So we can include that in the motion. Okay, great. And then the only other question I had, in regards to the other, the changes for, if you can, for, yeah, the other, for permitted versus non-permitted, oh, I'm sorry, permitted versus conditionally permitted. For the sake of the commission, can you kind of go through what's the difference for a developer or for an applicant coming in when we say it's conditional or it's permitted?
So if a customer or applicant came in and wanted to build or start a manufacturing of manufactured homes or the mobile homes, to build them in our, in our code currently, we would make them go through the CP process.
Or put the whole pub, public hearing and everything else, right?
Put that in front of the planning commission for approval. Since we are changing it to permitted, they won't have to go through that process and they can, if there's an existing building, either go through the certificate occupancy process or they probably have to go through a site development review if it was a vacant lot.
So basically just kind of an administrative review with staff. What are some examples of, of these two changes? So the one, the, is the one like a, like a skyline facility, like a full manufacturing facility? Is that, I mean, is there a need to?
Well, that, those are travel trailers, so it would be similar except that they're the manufactured homes. So they'd be more of a permanent structure as opposed to the travel trails.
Commissioner, if I can, the zoning area that we're only changing or requesting is the commercial manufacturing. So the zoning does allow for manufacturing. And so what we're trying to do is to make it a little bit less restrictive in a home building or housing development, just to meet the RENA numbers for the state. So this will encourage businesses to locate within the city to develop those type of businesses here without going through the discretionary review of a conditional use permit, which makes it easier for those businesses to establish as well as creating those opportunities for homes, manufactured homes to be developed to meet more housing needs that are quite short in Southern California right now, in California in general.
So, so an example of that would be like the skyline?
Correct.
Facility. So it'd be, and that would not go through the conditional use permit process, but in terms of still all of the other, you know, potential concerns that the community may have, that's just going to be routed straight through staff and not through a public hearing?
Correct. We would still identify the conditions, make sure that they meet parking requirements, the setback requirements, the noise requirements. All of those things would still apply. This just gives the opportunity for them to establish on an existing building. That makes it a little bit easier for them to do that.
So the, so is, is the change from conditional to permitted, is that, that's being driven by kind of state requirements?
We're assisting them. It's not really driven by them, but we're trying to, because we have 6,466 units that we need to meet as the last meeting that we discussed about RENA numbers. And that's quite a bit of units that we need to establish. So this will assist in helping to get more housing within the city limits.
I guess my only hesitancy, but it's, it's very, very minor, but my only hesitancy is that, is that it has, it seems like it could be a pretty large type of a facility that would potentially have a pretty significant impact to the local area and we're, we're not allowing the process for the public to come in and voice their, their opinion. So that I have a little bit of a concern on, just not, not that we're allowing that type of use in the, in the manufacturing zoning, but just that we're going straight to permitting versus a conditional permit. So I'm just wondering if there's, if that is a, if that is a significant roadblock that is CUP process, that much of a conditional roadblock to have a facility like a manufacturing, a manufactured homes. I mean, I would think that if they were coming in, they would, that would be, you know, it's not like a, you know, a tobacco store or something. I mean, it's, it's a pretty large operation. They would be accustomed to that process and probably would, would welcome that process to make sure that they're good neighbors.
And again, they're not immune from the zoning ordinance of noise, setback, hours of operation. All of this will still apply. So they'll be limited to certain discretion within the code that's already outlined. What they're, what we're trying to do is make it a little bit easier for those businesses to establish within the city limits. But we could look at it to make sure that there are other manufacturing businesses or uses that are not related to housing that are permitted within the CM zoning. So this is just to encourage the housing portion of it a little bit more.
Yeah, and I, I understand and agree with the intent. It's the process I'm a little just hesitant on is that the whole purpose of this is public hearing, right, is to give an opportunity for the public to come and express their, their concerns. So we're, we're categorically saying that these ones, these types of large-scale manufacturing facilities don't need to go through the public hearing process and I have a little bit of a concern with. But I, I also have a lot of trust in, in city to make sure that those are all, in city staff to make sure that those issues are, are addressed. It just seems like that's what we're here for as this.
Reference it for patios, correct? This is just in reference to the patio?
No, they're two separate, two separate changes.
I see the CM, commercial manufacturing, but I didn't see that really in, on the screen. I just saw the residential setbacks on those, but I didn't see the, the CM setbacks on the projection unless I missed it.
Oh, no, this is not related to CM setbacks. This is related to CM use of two identified uses that are currently requires a conditional use permit that staff is recommending to change that to a permitted use to the CM zoning only, but does not have a setback issue related to the CM section.
But it's, it's changing it from conditional use to permitted use for retail trade uses and for industrial.
Right. Yeah, I missed, I missed that too.
They have to call all the other grammatical rules.
That is correct.
Right, I'm just, I'm just, I'm wondering if maybe these two things should be separated in two different things, you know? I mean, the setbacks for patios is, is a residential centric issue and understandable and I think complete agreement. The other is, is, seems to be a little bit larger, larger scale, I mean, at least in my, in my opinion, is a little bit larger scale and may, may necessitate a little bit more discussion and, and, and address from staff in the staff report because there wasn't a lot in the staff report specifically about that and about how that would, would, would impact. I mean, I personally, I'd like to see some, some examples of kind of what, what does that mean? What, what are we talking about in terms of potential types of development that would come through that would no longer go through the CUP process, but would just be straight permitted without giving the public an opportunity to, 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 to comment. But I don't want to mingle that up with, with the patios because I completely agree with everything on the patio.
Sure. And let me try to address your concern. So the reason why we bundled this together in this way is that because they're related to housing and residential development. And the patio issue is because of multiple lots, new development are coming in with very little rear yard setback areas and they're identifying it as a minimum of 10-foot building setback. And so when we have that as same as the patio cover, the residents didn't have any opportunity to make any changes to their, their existing new homes. And by looking at that, we wanted to also make sure that anything that's kind of related to residential development also would be included in this. And we have other, other zoning ordinance cleanup items that are more related to development of different things for the city. And so we're trying to bundle residential type uses together, commercial type uses together and industrial type uses together. So that's how we're trying to bundle it together at this point.
Each one of these says, like in the retail trade, this says number 10, manufactured home sales with or without onsite display of models and inventory. And then that other section was manufactured assembly display and sale of modular homes. That's what you're saying would be a permitted use rather than a conditional?
Correct.
Right, and so, so when I look at those two, two things, I think, okay, who, who is, who's the, the city stakeholder that would be looking at a patio? It's the single-family residence owner, an individual who, who owns a home, just wants to add on a patio. That sure seems like a much different, you know, a project than someone coming in saying, I want to build a manufacturing facility to build manufactured homes. And so to me, those are apples and oranges. And so while they're both dealing with residential development, one's, one's just the residents themselves and then the other is building homes. So I, I still, I still have a little bit, I guess, and it really centers around the, the removal of the conditional process whereby the public has an opportunity. I am in complete agreement that in things like five-foot separation for an individual residence, they shouldn't have to go through this process. The staff should be able to make those adjustments. But on something that's a large manufacturing facility, it seems like that should be something that should still, at least in my opinion, should still have an opportunity to get public input.
I read it wrong then. When I read through this, I thought it would, it meant that it was the manufactured home sales and the building of those models and/or the sale of the modular homes on that site. I didn't read it as the whole.
It's, it's, that right there is what changes it. So it goes from.
And that's what I'm looking at here.
That's, that's, that's what I have a little bit of. I'm fine with everything else. I just have a little bit of a concern with, with that going directly to permitting process and not open to public, public input.
Manufacture, assembly, display and sell the modular homes. You said it already, but why did you choose to switch?
So, so the reason why we're requesting that is because the zoning allows for manufacturing already. So it's not a retail space. So being that it's a zone commercial manufacturing, which does allow for manufacturing, we're just trying to make it a little easier for home development businesses to be located within the city.
For manufacturer home?
Manufacturer, assembly, display and sales of modular homes. So it doesn't necessarily have to have all of those components. It could be part of this component. It could be part of this component. It could be mixture of those components, but that's what we're trying to do.
So, HP, sort of make sure I understand. So right now, before any changes, manufacturer, assembly, display, and sales of modular homes, period, is
Requires a conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit. So, I mean, and that to me is appropriate. And again, it's the change to permitting all of those things at the same time without public input that I'm a little concerned about. So I mean, the outdoor storage and the retail sales and things of that nature is all good. I just, it seems like that could be a pretty significant project that we're not giving an opportunity for public and have a little bit of a concern. So I'm wondering, would it be possible to separate these two things and maybe take a closer look at this outside of the patio?
Okay. I don't know if we can separate it tonight, due to the fact that we advertised both items under the one notice and are under one resolution.
Well, I guess maybe we'll, if there's no more questions for staff directly, but open up public hearing, get any input, close that up, and then we can discuss amongst the commission and see how we want to move forward. Is that okay?
Yes, good.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to open up public hearing? Is there any comments online or anybody on telephone list that wants to speak to this?
There are no callers on the line, and we did not receive any comments.
Okay, it'll be a quick public hearing. Anybody else? And then close public hearing? All right, so.
Yeah, I missed that completely.
I'm sorry?
I got the patio setback portion of this, but I missed completely this aspect of the change. So I'm glad you brought it up. But I do agree with you that we should separate the two.
I would think that if we brought this back, that we can continue the public hearing and ask staff to bring it back as two separate items? Or would it just forget it and just come back and start all over?
Well, I don't think there's any issue with the first section, right? I mean, as far as the patios, there's no point holding that up. So if we could bring that, bring them back as separate items, so we can get that one approved and get it taken care of? Have a little bit more understanding of what the second part of this means.
Okay. So is it appropriate to either continue, reopen the public hearing and continue it? Or should we?
So what we can do, and then Sonny can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can bring it back to you with two separate resolutions. One pertaining to the setback component and the other resolution pertaining to the the commercial manufacturing component.
That's correct. That's how it's going to have to be done, because right now, as written, the resolution includes both.
So do we dismiss this one altogether and just vote no on it and ask you to bring them back? Or do you continue the Public hearing and ask it to be resolved?
My recommendation to just dismiss it and then bring it back as two separate items, just to make it as clean as possible.
Well, is there a motion for that?
We're motioning to dismiss item C6 until the next meeting.
Dismiss it of
I probably said it wrong. It would be vote no on it as it is right now.
So oppose?
Or?
That's correct, yeah, oppose, fine, and then, yeah.
Ask for it to be brought back.
That's correct.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so entertain a motion to deny item 6C, the zoning ordinance amendment number 21-001.
I'll second that. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, we're voting to.
Right, so that All right.
I got confused.
Yeah, please go ahead and redo this. So the motion, sir?
Actually, after
It's yes to deny.
Hold on just one more moment.
Sorry, did you want to finish?
So we're voting yes to deny.
Actually, after consulting with the director, I think that it might be, it might make more sense if we continue it so that we don't have to renotice and then bring it back as two separate resolutions, so that we don't have to renotice. That does make the most sense.
Good, yeah. All right, so now
We reopen the public hearing and continue it to the next meeting, asking staff to bring it back in a form dividing the two.
I'll second that.
I think we're good. And that motion carries 5-0. So this item is being continued until a further meeting, until a future meeting date. And we'll look at that in two separate resolutions. Thank you. Okay, next item, 7A, general plan amendment 15-002, the Page Ranch specific, plan amendment 15-001, tenor track MAC 36841 and subsequent environmental impact report. HP, you want to get a
Sure, thinking chair, members of the commission. So on May 4th, the planning commission meeting, this item was continued to the, this meeting, June 1st, to get additional comments back from the applicant for the traffic impact for the project itself. During that meeting, council members were logged in and listening into the planning commission hearing. And that particular council member was satisfied with the answer that was given by the applicant. So they would like to pull the item back to, I'm sorry, back to city council for a second reading of that general plan amendment. So thank you very much for your hard work on this item, but you don't have to take any action on this item. We're just letting you know what the direction of the council is at this point.
I was really glad to read that.
Yeah, I think also one of the cool things about that is just that it kind of shows, going back to that process of the public input and everything else, but it shows that, you know, that there was obviously some concern, and, you know, we were tasked as a commission to kind of dig in a little bit deeper, and it provided us. My only regret is that we didn't have the applicant in person, so we could have a better back and forth. I think it would have been a lot more informational for all of us. But I'm glad that we were able to kind of dig into the weeds, as it were, and then give city council the level of comfort that they needed to move this forward, so. Very good. All right, automate department reports, city attorney reports?
Nothing to report from the city attorney's office.
All right, community development reports?
So two kind of vital items that we need to discuss with you is we need to find time for the housing element update workshop, as well as the objective design standards workshop. So the housing workshop is going to be a combination workshop with city council. And I'm trying to get your reading on when you're available. So we're trying to decide whether it's going to be a special meeting, one of the planning commission meetings, or one of the city council meetings. But we'd like to get this going, since that we have to have the housing element adopted and approved at least by October 15th of this year. So if we can get your schedules sent to Karina when your availabilities are, we can try to schedule that as quickly as possible. The objective design standards, so this is something that we discussed a while back with Nelson Miller when he was here. So basically, what this does is that it creates criteria in which the development code or the zoning code will help foster a development of multifamily residential developments with a certain criteria that's already in place or in the code itself. So if they follow that, then it would become as part of a process that will speed up their residential development, and they would go directly to plan check process. So this is a work study to get your input, what things that you would like to see, not see, the comments that you can make based on what's being presented at that work study. So that's what we're looking for at that. Right now, we have the consultant working on a draft portion of that section, and that would apply for certain zoning in the city. And that gives the full, I guess, guidelines as to, and requirements as to how they can build those developments in the future, without coming back to this body.
So if it were combined at a council meeting, they do their work study sessions prior to their council meeting, what, say around 5 o'clock?
5 o'clock or 6 o'clock, it's depending on the length of the work study that's given. So it may be a 5 o'clock session, it may be a 6 o'clock session, it may be a special meeting altogether.
I think that, and that this is, I think, is going to be an important effort for the commission to be involved with, because what it does is kind of just what we were talking about, is it takes some of this, in an effort to help streamline the development process, it short, it expedites the process to not have to come through the public hearing. And so it's good from the perspective of it supports and is more efficient, if you will. We just need to make sure that we're addressing, you know, what our community needs are through development. Agree. Okay, future agenda items.
So in the future, you'll see the Oak Ridge, McSweeney, this is a single-family residential development that'll be coming before you. We have Stetson Corner, this is a commercial development on Stetson and Sanderson, southeast corner. And we have Western Zoning Consistency, this, oh, sorry.
Oh, Stetson and Sanderson.
Yes.
The back.
Correct.
Very good.
And Western Zoning Consistency, this is the area that the city has annexed recently, and the zoning and general plan designation is not consistent, so we're just doing a cleanup item on that item. And we have some other future projects that we're still working on, and those will be coming before you soon.
That Oak Ridge, McSweeney, what builder is that for?
I believe that is D.R. Horton.
Is that the, is that the last track on that side of the channel?
I believe it is.
Yeah, that, they made a nice, that road is, went from really crappy to really good really quick. Until now, they're putting up the signals, it's like
I know.
Okay, thank you. Director Kang, planning commissioner reports?
Uh, Commissioner, yeah?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Luntie?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Beefeater?
Nothing to report.
Vice Chair Van Arzra?
I have a request that adjourned.
Mr.?
I have a request for adjournment. I'd like to request that we adjourn in honor of Rose Salgado, who passed away two weeks Saturday. She had a whole lot to do with it.
And Chairman Wirth?
I have nothing to report. Well, on behalf of the planning commission, then, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Rose Salgado, and we will be adjourned until June 15th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Of course.